You should just ad lib, it'll be great.
I feel like I did that last time. It felt like that anyway. All right.
Okay, we're good Lauren, go ahead.
All right, good evening everyone, I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome you to the regular meeting of the Milwaukee Planning Commission. Agendas and additional copies of staff reports are available on the city website at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov. You may locate them by navigating to the community calendar where tonight's meeting page is posted. If you have not reviewed the agenda, please do so, it contains important information about the process. If you wish to be included in the mailing list for decisions, or if you wish to provide public comment, please send an email to planning@milwaukeeoregon.gov. I will read into the record written comments received by during the meeting. Written comments should be concise, each reading will be limited to three minutes. In order to be included in the meeting record, public comments must be received before the end of the applicable portion of the meeting. We will follow the basic format listed on the back of the agenda, it includes the hearing procedural steps. We may vary from the process based on the specific circumstances of each hearing. Next on our agenda is approval of the meeting minutes for March 23rd, 2021. Does any of the commissioners have corrections to make?
Yes. So there's, there are a few occasions where I think we referred to Chair Massey in the minutes. And at that point, Chair Massey was Commissioner Massey and like for instance, under 1.0 Chair Massey called the meeting to order at 6:30pm, that was actually me, so Vice Chair Edge instead of Chair Massey. And then I think that there was another point where just a comment referred, the Chair Massey or Commissioner Massey made was labeled as Chair Massey, but I'm having trouble finding that.
It's okay, just if I can find it.
On page eight at the bottom paragraph. But those would be my changes.
Any, anyone else?
Mary, can we make a note to make this question under 2.0 more grammatically correct?
Yes.
Okay, I will entertain a motion then to approve the notes as amended. Can I hear a motion?
A motion to approve the notes as amended. Second.
Seconds, then motioned and seconded, all of those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing hands raised and aye, and I have none opposed then, already we'll move on. Informational items, are there any informational items from staff tonight?
I was just gonna let the commissioners know that the Waverly development, which is now referred to as Burnham Oaks, is moving through the process and that they have submitted their final plat and are working on their tree protection now, so they're moving through that process. Regarding the Monroe apartments that went away, apparently there's a developer that might be a little interested in that, so I will keep you posted, that would be really great. We don't know what's gonna happen, but there's some talk going on. And then we haven't heard anything back from Hillside yet, but I will let you know when we do. And then upcoming is you'll have Coho and Kellogg on your agendas pretty soon, so I just wanted to let you know that those things were coming. And that's it, yep.
Forecast is busy, that's for sure. Let's move on then to 4.0, audience participation. This is the opportunity for anyone, or any comment rather, on anything not listed on tonight's agenda. Does anyone wish to comment on an item that's not on the agenda tonight? Do we have anybody in attendance, Mary?
We do, but I don't see any hands raised for anything not on the agenda tonight.
Last request, if you're in attendance and would like to make a comment on not, items not on the agenda, please raise, use raise the hand function. All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on to 5.0, public hearings. The next agenda on, for tonight's meeting is a continued public hearing on Providence supportive housing height variance. The public hearing on VR-2021-006 at the northwest corner of Welland Street and 34th Avenue, tax lot 11E25DC0580059006000 is called to order. The purpose of this hearing is to consider the application number VR-2021-006. The commission initiated this hearing on May 11th, 2021, and continued it tonight, May 25th, 2021. The applicant has the burden of proving that the application is consistent with the City of Milwaukee's zoning subdivision ordinance, comprehensive plan, and any applicable municipal code provisions, and that the proposal conforms with all of the city's applicable criteria. Any party withstanding may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission on, to the city council. Persons withstanding are those who are, who have, rather, submitted comments or testify in person. Commissioner, participation, before we begin, I'd like to give each commissioner the opportunity to state their intent to participate or abstain from the hearing tonight. Does anyone on the Planning Commission wish to abstain? Seeing no hands raised and no otherwise, do any, again here, I think we could do some grammatical. Do any members of the Planning Commission wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest? Seeing no hand raised, does any member wish to report an ex parte contact? No hand raised. Does anyone have any rebuttal to the ex parte contacts declared by the commissioners, having been none, I'll move on. Will any commissioner who has visited the site prior to the hearing, please raise the hand or indicate so verbally? All hands have been raised, do any of the commissioners who've visited the site indicate that they spoke to anyone at the site, or know anything that's different than what has been indicated by the staff report for this application? No, all no, all silent otherwise, moving on. Have any commissioners that missed any part of the previous hearing, review, have they reviewed the material for those hearings to prepare for participation this evening? Amy is giving us a thumbs up, commissioner earned, anybody else? Okay, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the participation of any member of the Planning Commission? Give you an opportunity, again, use the raise hand function if you'd like to challenge participation, seeing none, we'll move on, staff report please, Amy?
Not Amy, but that's okay.
Mary, Mary, whoever Amy is, I don't know.
Amy's like, I didn't write a staff report, oh no.
Sorry.
All right, let me show my screen here. Okay, assuming you all can see that. Okay, great. So I'm, I'm gonna go over briefly some of the info that we went over last time, just for any people that are listening today that weren't there last time. And then I'll briefly go over kind of what the, the comment schedule and sort of testimony that was provided from last time, how we've done that as well, and what to expect for the rest of the hearing today. So Mary Heberling, Assistant Planner with the City of Milwaukee, and I'll be going through the continued hearing for this proposal. So again, the proposal is around the northwest corner of 34th and Welland Street. The proposed site that we're talking about is in the blue outline there on the picture. Both boxes are owned by Providence, but the, the proposal that you're hearing tonight is only for the area that is in the box there, for the proposed mixed-use building. The site is currently vacant, partially also part of the existing parking lot there on the west side, and it consists of three tax lots, which is, which comes to about 0.65 acres in total. The zoning for the properties that we're talking about today is on general mixed use, so GMU. And the properties to the west of the site are also zones the same at GMU, and then the surrounding area to the east and north and south are zoned R3, which is one of our medium density zones. Residential zones. So the proposal that you are looking at tonight is for a five-story mixed-use building. It's to provide 72 deeply affordable housing for seniors on the four or fifth through second floor, and then the first floor will be a medical clinic for the Elder Place Pace Center that Providence has. This proposal before you all has three gerances that you are going to be discussing today. The first experience is the reduced front and rear transition measure setbacks, the reduction in building step back requirements for the street-facing stories above 45 feet, which is that fifth story. And then the general mixed-use building height variance for the fourth and this stories as well, because they're asking for both of them. Of the height bonuses. So in terms of what you all did last time, we continue to the hearing from the May 11th hearing for additional comments and testimony to be provided by the public and the applicant as well. So we provided a week for any new written evidence, arguments, or testimony. We did receive four comments from the public and then additional testimony from the applicant. And all of those comments and testimony were provided to Planning Commission on May 18th, so they had, they had all the comments since the 18th. And then there is another week that we gave the community as well as applicant options for written rebuttal on any new evidence and arguments or testimony that was submitted on the 18th. And the city did receive comments from two community members and rebuttal testimony from the applicant. And all of those comments and testimony were provided to Planning Commission today. If any of the commissioners haven't received those, let me know, I can forward that on, but you should have gotten them earlier today as well. And then for the hearing tonight, due to the way that it was done last time on May 11th, at the hearing, the Planning Commission can open the record again for a limited purpose of asking clarifying questions of staff and the applicant, and then we'll proceed to deliberation, so there won't be any public testimony taken, verbal public testimony taken on the, the hearing tonight. But again, we did allow for additional testimony and comments to be given over the past two weeks in written form from the public and applicant. And then the applicant also waived their final argument, so that this could happen in two weeks instead of the, the three, if they didn't waive their final argument. And so we are at, that's where we're at for tonight then. So the staff hasn't changed the recommendation, we didn't do any extra analysis because it was just to give time for additional testimony and comments. So the recommendation is the same as last time, which is to approve the proposal for the building height variance and transition measures and building step back variances, which will result in a five-story mixed-use building with medical clinics based on the first floor and residential affordable housing for seniors on additional four stories. And then we also recommend to adopt the attached findings as well. So tonight, the Planning Commission has four options, same as last time. Approve the application subject to the recommended findings, approve the application with modified findings and conditions of approval, and then such modifications need to be read to the record. They can deny the application upon finding that it does not meet the approval criteria, or continue the hearing. And that was my brief presentation for you all, let me stop sharing here. And then I will open for any questions that you have for me.
I'll just jump in, no one else. So there were some, some requests from community members about continuing the hearing for 120 days. And could you explain the 120-day rule, or the 100-day rule, or which, which of those applies here and what that means?
Yeah, so because it's an affordable housing project, it's actually a recent law from the state that it's 100 days. And what that means to have 120 days is that an application for development must be, have a decision completed within 100 days, including any appeals. So that means that once an application has been deemed complete, meaning it meets all of the requirements for, to do a review from the cities, and there's 100 days for the city to create a final decision on it, basically, including any sort of appeals. So the 100 days really is meant for the applicant to be able to know that they have a decision in a certain time period. And that's what the 120-day, or 120, or 100 for this particular case, because it's an affordable housing project, is what it means.
And Mary, can you confirm that mailings went out for the community last time we heard? Otherwise, I just wanna make sure that that's so recorded publicly.
Yeah, yeah, we sent out, I guess I can go over the whole notice system, just so we're all very clear on what happened. So when we received the application, we sent referral to Ardenwald, Johnson Creek NDA, after Campbell NDA, other city departments, and Clackamas Fire District on April 13th. And then we sent a 20-day public notice to all properties within 300 feet and property owners on April 23rd. And then the applicant posted a sign on their property on April 27th, so two weeks before the May 11th hearing. And that's our typical process that we do for any development that we, application that we receive, the city.
Okay. I don't mind asking some other questions, just to be clear about this, Mary, but the maximum height is 45 feet. The building height is 62 feet, city recommends approval based on the criteria, can you explain why?
I'm being myself, so the general mixed-use zone allows height bonuses beyond the maximum height of 45 feet. One bonus being if you, 25% of the building is residential, so they meet that, and so they're allowed to go another story that way. And then the other bonus is if they are a certified green building, which they're also proposing. And with bonuses, you can go above the height to a maximum of 69 feet. And so the application is actually proposing 64 feet, so lower, they could potentially go to 69 with the height bonuses, but, but they're only going to 64. And so it is above the maximum without bonuses, but with the bonuses, it's within the height.
Okay, thanks for making that super clear, I got a hand up from Commissioner Sherman, go ahead.
Thanks Chair Loesfeld, and Mary couldn't, just for anybody who's also tuning in, can you remind us? I believe one of those bonuses is kind of permitted by right, whereas the other is discretionary, and that is kind of what we're talking about as the planning commissions, can you just remind us all of that?
Yes, yes, so if you choose, doesn't matter which high bonus you go with, but if you choose to do one of them, you're allowed by right, meaning you don't have to go to Planning Commission review to get that, so they're, they're by right allowed to go to four stories. Because they're asking for both of the height bonuses to go to five stories, that's why we're here before you all. It triggers it to come before Planning Commission for review if you ask for both height bonuses.
I have another question, is my volume okay? I'll speak, I'll speak quietly, somebody told me it was up.
It was a little garbled is more of what it was.
Oh, really? Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Mary, the building is also not consistent with some of the setback requirements. Can you tell us why city staff would recommend approval, even though those criteria are not consistently being met?
Yeah, so the, the site is surrounded to the north, south, and east by R3. And so because of that, the general mixed-use, it's next to a lower-density zone, which R3 is technically lower-density than GMU. They're required to meet the setbacks of the R3 zone. And so what that means is the front, they need that on the east side of the building, so closer to 34th. They do have the 15 feet, which is consistent with what you would do, what you would have in the R3s of them. To the north, which is the back of the property, they are asking for 11 feet instead of the 15-foot setback, just for the first floor. The additional floors, the second through the fifth, are actually setback 15 feet. And because of the first floor being four feet difference, the approval criteria for a variance, based on the, the minimal impact the, the applicant has provided of how they would address any sort of impacts, especially with the trees that are to the north. And the staff felt that that was meeting the approval criteria. And then the setback to the front of the building, which is the largest of the askings of setbacks against the transition measure. The building, 40, about 40 feet of the building on the west side, the closest, closer to 32nd Avenue, is asking for a two-foot setback versus the 15, and then the rest, the 90-foot building. And then the rest, the 90-foot building, as you go east, is actually going to for 20 feet, which is the maximum you can actually do in the general mixed use zone. So the general mixed uses intended to have buildings closer to the street. There we actually in most zones don't ask, especially in the R3, don't have a maximum setback, but in the GMU we do because we're usually intending the buildings to be closer to the street to provide more pedestrian activity and things like that, because typically they'll have more commercial or mixed-use buildings. And so it makes more sense to be closer to the street when you have that type of building. So the setback that they're asking for two feet, if there wasn't R3 across the street from it, actually would be meeting the general mixed use zone. You could go up to zero feet for a setback for general mixed use zone. But for this particular project, again, even if it's across the street, our three transition measures are still required. Because the building is, it's not the entire building that isn't meeting the setback. It's actually the building that's closer to 32nd is closer to the the hospital area, the parking lot. The intention is there to provide where is farther away from more of the residential zone, R3 zone, is to keep it keep it farther away from there. So not the entire building isn't asking for the the two-foot setback. It's minimizing the impacts there. It also, the applicant stated that it needed to be closer for the clinic use and for the the people that they that will be going to the clinic. It's easier for them, especially if it's seniors, to get from the drop-off location that's right in front of there to the front door. So the intent of needing to go within that 15-foot setback to to be two feet is there for the benefit of the people that they're going to be serving if the building is built. And so there's a variety of other different approval criteria for the variants as well, but staff felt that the applicant met that approval criteria.
I think that's pretty clear. I just asked one more time if commissioners have questions. Commissioner, go to your edge.
Yeah, I've seen a couple of references in, you know, the applicant's testimony as well as in our draft findings to the particularly with respect to the rear yard setback, how the building on the property behind is a listed historic landmark. And I'm just wondering where in our approval criteria that has any weight in terms of the decision that we're making with respect to this site. I, you know, does that does that have any bearing whatsoever on on this discussion tonight?
That's a good question. I'm not aware of particular criteria regarding historic building. Most of our historic building overlay zone is about what you can do on the site versus impacts surrounding it. So we sort of propose impacts typically. We don't have that as criteria if the surrounding area has an historic property. But the historic property could do a variety of different things on it. There are some limitations, obviously, on building materials and kind of the facade that you can do to it, but there is an actual approval criteria, especially for a variance regarding historic sites.
And similarly, with respect to the front setback, the, you know, the the transition measures and the the variance to the front setback to the R3 across the street is according to the code, is what's important to the actual uses that are in those buildings across the street or the zoning designation that under which those those buildings are that, you know, underlays the building. So
Yeah.
I was pretty sure it was the zoning designation that was important and not the uses, but again, we're seeing references to, you know, it's it's okay for the building to be a little bit closer because of a use that's across the street as opposed to a zoning designation.
Yeah. Yeah, it is technically the zone, although the the difference because of it being R3 is there are more allowed types of uses than other low lower-density residential zones, obviously. You can do commercial zones through conditional use and things like that. So you are getting different uses that you may see with other residential zones because it's being R3. But you're right, it is technically based on the zone and not the uses.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Sherman, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair Losfeld. And and just kind of following on Vice Chair Edge's question. Mary, I think I might have asked this in the hearing. Had there been GMU across the street, many of these issues wouldn't be issues. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, especially for the transition measures. So they could have technically gone to zero setback if there wasn't the the R3 across the street, if it was a general mixed-use GMU across the street. Yeah.
Thanks.
Final questions. Okay, I'm gonna move on then. Before we begin, commission deliberations, the planning commission may ask the applicant any final questions. The applicant waived their final argument rebuttal. And so planning commission will move on to applicant applicant questions. Mary, is the applicant here this evening?
Yes, so let me move them over.
And then Planning Commission, do any of you have specific questions that you'd like to raise? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Earn. Make sure we have them on real quick, if you would just give them a second. And Mary, do we want to go through, state your name and?
Sure. Yeah, and let me know if anyone else needs to be moved over.
Okay, okay, let's go ahead. We'll start with Lee, if you if you would first, to state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Lee Alligood with OTAC 808 South Spex Third Avenue, Suite 800, Portland, Oregon 97214.
Okay, go ahead.
With regard to the commercial clinics and offices, the space there, is that available to like any doctors or clinics in the community that would be interested in that space? Or is it specifically for the facility or residents that are going in there? Is is there something else already planned?
I'd like Walter to take that one.
Walter, if you would like, you'd have to go unmute and then state your name and address.
My understanding is that it will be staffed, that staff from the existing Elder Place Clinic on the Providence Hospital site will move over to this clinic and occupy this clinic instead.
Does that open up commercial space over there for other doctors or facilities, clinics in the area that would potentially want to rent out clinic space?
Yeah, I don't know how Providence operates their their spaces. I would guess Providence affiliated professionals could go back into the space. The information that we have and that we submitted is that there are no tenants planned for that facility once the Elder Place moves.
Commissioner Kostroby, I saw your hand up. Do you still have a question?
Yes, it was it was about, there seems to be concerns about the the trees and I'm looking at the the arborist report right now. I don't know if if many people have access to that. It does mention that the impact on the trees is going to be low, but I just think it would be good to hear that from you guys on on exactly what impact is going to be for those trees, because that seems to be a concern. And I know that you did state before in the previous meeting that we're going to have a net positive of trees, of can a tree canopy of green space, of of green space. So if you just run through that real quick, I would appreciate.
Sure. And one clarification on the previous question. The space is open to other medical professionals. It sounds like Walter's having difficulty in meeting. Um, to your question about the arborist report, so we did contract with an arborist to go to the site and review the trees. Their opinion is that there will not be impacts to the trees where the development may need to come closer to the drip line than ideal. There can be revisions made to the structure of the building itself that can avoid those impacts. And so they don't anticipate any impacts to those trees at all as part of the development. There are a lot of ways to mitigate potential tree impacts that are evaluated. And then an arborist, the arborist report recommended that an arborist be on site when any work is happening near these trees. And so that would be a recommendation that would be implemented as well.
With questions? Commissioner Hemmer?
So why why build the building here if it's Providence land? Why wouldn't you build it in the parking lot so that you were in the complete GMU zone and out of this kind of R3 dilemma?
Well, I think we provided some background in our written testimony. They did look at other sites on the Providence site. They did look at the parking lot. They've done some environmental assessments and currently the parking lot isn't appropriate for residential development without mitigation. And so this site was identified as a site that was ready for residential development without mitigation. It's still within the GMU zone, is still owned by the hospital. So it's just in terms of the use, it's a more appropriate location environmentally.
Commissioner Sherman, your hands raised.
Thanks, Chair Losfeld. That's kind of following up on the tree question, and this might be for the consultant team as as well as potentially city staff. Could the applicant, if they wanted to, kind of shear the trees at the property line? I know that's not what's being proposed, but just kind of wondering with kind of existing regulations, would that be a possibility? Not, again, not that this is being proposed.
From the applicant's position, that would be poor tree treatment. So that's not something that we would recommend or support. I don't know if the city has regulations related to tree.
Name is Gori Raj Baidya with Sarah Architects Designer and address 7409 Southeast 113th Avenue 97266. So one of the big three is saying as part last time, also, we mentioned that this is aging place and so really helping healthy healing and wellness is a big piece. And we're actually really needing a lot of the biophilic, like the natural aspect as a big part of wellness and well-being for the the seniors who are aging in place and also to support the clinic. So it would be very detrimental to the objective that we have to, you know, ruin already, you know, the plants that are already there. So we'll be taking a lot of care to make sure it stays green. It's it has a lot of that natural screening around.
Yeah, and in terms of in terms of city regulations, we don't currently have regulations regarding pruning or how you cut trees on private property. That may change in the next year or two, but currently we do not.
I have a question for you, Lee. And if you could just remind us for the section of the property on the south elevation that only meets two-foot setback, can you explain why the design team, why it is that the proposal is limiting itself to two feet and not going further?
Yeah, Gori, I think that's a question for you.
Yeah, meaning like going to a zero setback.
Meaning the specific criteria 15.
Why aren't we doing 15 and why are we going to two? Yeah, so once again, it was the really required by the program requirement for the clinic to be feasible in terms of, and this is, you know, really coming from program requirement from Providence. For the clinic to be feasible, it needed to have same 500 square feet to meet the requirement. And then that with that criteria given, and also the residential ground floor has a particular requirement for agent place such as a really big common area for seniors to sit and hang out. Also, even the typical areas that we would have in most market rate lobby area, we have to make it much bigger because of the agent place requirement by HUD. So all the corridors have to be, you know, we've made all the corridors six foot wide. The mail area is fully fully accessible. So meaning like you can have like the 60-inch circular, all of that in front of each one of the mailboxes, right? So the all the room inside had to be very, very spacious in order to allow for the easy movement, fall prevention and agent place model that HUD required. And so trying to provide all of that within a limited space on the ground floor and the same 500 square feet for the clinic. We're really looking to kind of stay as far away from the residential R3 zone, except that one piece. And that was the only way for us to meet all the area requirement. That was why we felt like keeping ourselves as far away and limiting to the littlest width of the building to kind of, you know, come into the the setback, we felt like would be the most appropriate solution, given the, you know, the program requirement. And that was why we kind of set that more to the western side, closer to the parking lot, you know, along closer to 32nd Avenue.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised. If there are no other hands raised, I'd like to move on. Okay?
Sorry, one one final question. I was looking kind of in the applicant rebuttal testimony and you and it, which I also don't know how publicly available that has been, but you know, kind of the original schematic of what was kind of being considered. We're in a pretty dramatically different place from from that building and that footprint to kind of where things are today. And I know we don't have a visual of that up on the screen for anybody who might be watching from home, but I was just wondering if the applicant could kind of talk through some of what that used to look like and some of the the changes that were made and why those changes were made kind of over time.
Real quick, the comments have all been uploaded to the the file website. So anyone that's watching should be able to to see them.
Yeah, so pre, again, we affordable housing ends up becoming a very scarce resource, right? And so we want to maximize what we can provide within a footprint. And so originally, we were trying to do see about like really embracing both the R3 zone and the GMU zone together to kind of create a more integrated sort of the housing. But one thing, and while we were doing that, we were kind of setting back 15-foot and all of that. But it really felt to us that because of also the outdoor landscape area requirement that we wanted to provide for the residents as well as part of the healthy healing aspect, almost like, if you will, like a local, small local park that we could do would be actually very much beneficial for the residents. And then what we also kind of then noticed is like, well, GMU actually allows a higher density within that particular side of the site. So with that, you know, we can actually clear up the R3 zone and here thereby really be setting further, further back away from the residential site on the southeast and most of the north. And that was the reason why we pushed everything further back onto this GMU and in order to get the density that we were still looking for, that's when we kind of added the height to kind of add, get the unit density that we were looking for. So it really, we really looked at many different options to kind of see, okay, how can we get the most of the out of this land? And at the very end, after discussing many different options, we really felt that we wanted to set the building back away from the residential zone as much as possible and create a local sort of a park that would be an amenity for the community and also for the residents. And that was really why we sort of started pushing further and further back to the west side.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'd like to move on. The commission, let's see here, we're going to move into discussion by the commissioners. Are commissioners ready for discussion? I assume we all are. Okay. Who wants to begin?
Do we need to close the record?
Do we? Cause it wasn't on the Oh, when the presentation with staff is over, close the record. So I'd like to close the record. Mary, does that work?
I think so.
Thank you. Now we can move into discussion, please. Okay, who wants to start?
I'll jump in. First off, I want to thank the applicant for, you know, what they're trying to do here. You know, this is obviously, you know, a, you know, we're trying to create more housing in the city and certainly, you know, with the population that they're serving. You know, this, you know, this is something that we, is a critical need in the community. And so I appreciate the opportunity, you know, to, to review this and that they're looking at Milwaukee for, you know, for, for this kind of development. The, I was, I was a little hung up on, you know, a couple of these things, you know, the transition measures to the back, the rear and transition measures to the front, you know, and they're really the setback run specifically with respect to the, the R three zone, you know, surrounding. But really in looking at the code language, you know, although the transition methods, measures themselves apply to the zoning designation. Really what the variance criteria is looking for is, you know, impacts to surrounding properties. Not really, you know, looking specifically at what the zone, you know, is of the property, but just saying impacts surrounding properties as well as responding to the existing built or natural environment in a creative and sensitive manner. And so, you know, the existing built environment is, you know, those medical offices across the street, for instance. You know, so it's totally viable for us in our discretion to consider that component in the fact that there, you know, there are, you know, businesses in, in those R three zone properties across the street. When we're thinking about, you know, whether or not this is appropriate, you know, for that variance. So after wrestling with that for a little bit around those, I, I really am now quite comfortable with the findings, the way they were written. I was about to propose some changes, but after again, rereading the code, I feel confident that what has been put before us by staff accurately reflects the facts in the record. You know, this, the variance process is designed to anticipate shortcomings in the code or scenarios of the code, you know, didn't explicitly call for. And we have a really structured process for how we review what those proposals are and whether or not we should approve them. And I, I think the applicant's done an admirable job of introducing facts into the record that explain why we should approve the variances that they've requested. So I'm prepared at this point to approve this and adopt the findings, the draft findings that staff has put before us.
I want to ask if any of the commissioners want to speak specifically to the criteria as it relates to the setback? I'd like to kind of tackle these A, B, if you will. So does anybody have any comments or concerns specifically related to the setback criteria? Okay, Commissioner Hemer, go ahead.
So I may not get another opportunity because somebody on this panel actually turned out to be a hero and she may not know that she's a hero. So Lee Alli Good used to work for the city. She was part of the DLC. She is the first one to bring me down to the Milwaukee Museum, believe it or not. That's the first time I ever entered the doors. Lee, you may not know this, but it is now my single most biggest passion in life. And we have made this thing survive in stride. So thank you very much for the introduction, the museum and the project that you laid forth that we did with the DLC. And I probably would never, ever get an opportunity to thank you again, but you have touched my heart. You have no idea. So many weren't around when we, when we talked about these setbacks and step backs in these transition zones because we wanted to allow five story buildings. And the compromise was, was that, well, you know what, when we get into these transition zones, we don't want that building to dominate over the residential buildings. And with the setbacks and with the step backs, we actually said, oh, well, because we're allowing the five stories, we're going to be giving the economic advantage as it is anyways. So knowing that what the intent of these rules were, I have a very hard time giving a variance on setbacks and step backs when it's this close to the zone. If it was up on Thirty Second, I wouldn't have an issue at all. But it is because in this transition area and the intent was to provide transition. That's why the rules are written the way that it was with the five story building. And it's not about the project. It's a lovely, great idea. I wish that, you know, you guys maybe would have tried to reconfigure the building a little bit to be able to make the, to make the rules apply, but I, I just can't do it. I think Ardenwald neighborhood and Ardenwald J C V makes a really good point that says, look, the rules were written this way for a specific purpose and that is for the transition. And if it was in the middle of a GMU zone, no problem, but it's right there on that border. And and I think that's important that we actually stick to those rules that were intended.
So Commissioner Hemer, let me ask you a question then. If it were to move to the west, Thirty Second would be on its west border. The issue we have here is with the south edge of the property. Is that right?
Well, on the, on the setback, yes.
So I, I just wanted
I don't, I don't really have an issue with the, with the two feet on the, on the low welling side. I guess that makes sense, especially to a street frontage. Especially because they give an extra five feet then back onto the, to the, to the other side. So they kind of minimize that. Right? But yeah, I, I just, and really because there's a parking lots to the
West.
Which direction is that? East, west, east, west, east. That, you know, that the fifteen, right? That makes sense there. I, I mean, I would have let them probably even get up to a zero lot line there. Almost because of that parking lot, but it is a transition in the neighborhood and into these neighborhoods. And I wouldn't allow for really any variances to that, to the setbacks or the step backs as well. I, I wish we called it tiering because it would be a lot easier to have this conversation, but we call it step back. So.
Would any of the other commissioners like to speak specifically about setbacks? Okay, then I want to move, sure. Okay, Commissioner Sherman?
Just maybe responding a little bit and to say that I don't have many significant kind of issues. I think when you look at how it's kind of proposed on the site, as well as the parking lot and the open space on the other side, I think you are in, in effect, getting some of those transition measures and I mean, not to litigate the past here, but I would take bigger issue with the fact that the south side of the street wasn't actually also zoned GMU. I mean, typically when you're coming through, you should be zoning both sides of the street. And so we've kind of created this problem. And maybe we can address these problems as we're going through CPIC. But that, that I think is kind of my only thought that I want to share on that issue.
Sure. That's a, that's a good point. I would like to move on then to the building height variance aspect of this. Is there any commissioners who would like to discuss or comment on the building height variance specifically? Commissioner Hemer?
I, I think that they completely and totally meet the intent of what that variance is, right? They, it's residential and they're doing green building. So I, I think they a hundred percent qualified for the building height. No issue at all.
Okay. Would anybody else like to comment? And the affirmative? Okay, then I think if we would like, we could potentially entertain a motion here. If nobody else would like to discuss either of these issues, the height variance or the step back? Is anybody at a point where they would like to entertain a motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion if there's no further discussion.
I believe there's no further discussion. Commissioner Massey, are you interested in a discussion? I'm muted. I'm just noticing.
No, no, no comments at this point.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Edge, and we will take a vote, vote and see where the commissioners are at.
Okay. Did you want to stopple first or did you want me to make the motion?
I'm ready for a motion. I think we are ready for a motion.
Okay, I move that we approve the variance requests under application VR dash two zero two one dash zero zero six with the findings and as distributed by staff.
I second that emotion.
And it has been seconded. All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Understate aye?
Aye.
I see three, four, five, six in a favor. All those opposed, raise your hand and state nay. And one opposed. All right, that would indicate that we have a file. Get into my script. One, before we let you all go, thank you again for the detail, for your patience and willingness to speed this up so that we can have this discussion tonight. I appreciate your application and the thoroughness and sensitivity. Thank you. And to all community members who are also listening, thank you very much for writing in your letters and those, those letters do mean something and the commissioners very much appreciate your insight. So thank you for giving your time. Okay, I'll go back to the script. Thank you, everybody. There is an appeal, right? If anyone wishes to appeal the decision to city council, you must make the application stating the grounds for your appeal within fifteen days of mailing of notice of decision. Please see planning staff for greater detail. Next, I'm going to move into our work session item. The next agenda on the item is an update on the comprehensive plan implementation project. And we will invite Vera then to provide a presentation. I had to promote whoever, I forgot.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much.
Are you in Switzerland?
No, this is, this is the gorge, actually. Yeah. Those are clouds. Those aren't mountains behind me. Switzerland would be pretty nice though, actually, but no, not this time. Thank you Chair Lowes Felton, commissioners here for my regular update for the comprehensive plan implementation project. And I'm, I'm going to share my screen if I may. And I guess to some degree I will apologize to Commissioner Edge. He has seen most of this presentation already at the CPIC meeting. But I think hopefully that will be okay. All right. Okay, so moving on, there was a staff report in your presentation. The, I just wanted to start the, the presentation with an update on the project schedule because there is a bit of a change here. We are in the draft code and maps and sort of reconciliation portion of the project, but we are and then moving into draft code and maps in June. You might notice that the red arrow here in the bottom now says fall winter twenty twenty one. There was a little more detail in the, in the project schedule for, in your staff, or actually no, it will be in your next staff report for our update in June. And I'll get to this in a little bit more detail when we come back to see you in June. But we've taken a step back and looked at the overall schedule for the project. This is a really complicated process. It's a bit of an experiment in kind of putting together all of this comprehensive plan implementation piece and then layering it with the House Bill two thousand and one. So when we took another look at our overall process, the June deadline or that June date, we are looking that, looking at that as a milestone for that draft code and maps. As you are aware, I believe we received a grant from DLCD to help us fund this project specifically towards the compliance with House Bill two thousand and one aspect of our project. So we are looking at the draft code that we will, that we will be submitting to DLCD for compliance with that grant and to close out that grant process as a milestone. As sort of a foundation code that is House Bill two thousand and one compliant. We'll also be including our tree code in there as well. And then we'll be moving into a code adoption process that, and that's a more detailed discussion that we will be having with you when we come back on June eighth to talk to you. We'll be talking with the city council as well in June. We're talking with the, with CPIC as well in June to kind of lay out what that overall process will be. But the idea being that there will be more discussion with, and we're basically workshopping the code with the planning commission in a much more detailed way and starting our public hearings in the fall. So we'll sort of have this foundation based draft code for the purposes of the DLCD grant. And then we'll be working through some additional details and more refinements of that code with you, with, with the public. And again, we'll have a much more detailed discussion about that in June, but I just wanted to highlight that scheduling change as far as we're moving forward with the project. Okay, again, our policy mandates for this project, providing housing choice, increasing tree canopy and preserving existing trees in the city and managing parking and to enable middle housing and protecting trees. So again, we're talking about housing choice, trees and parking as it relates to residential development. I have a couple of slides to talk about the open house results that we had for the, for the open house that ended in April. And a couple of these statistics or these details are included because they relate to some of the things that I'll be talking about in a little bit later. The first slide talks about parking and kind of what the results were from the survey related to questions about parking. And you can see in the chart on the, on the left that the preferred option sort of in the, in the middle had the, had the most kind of support for a combination of on-street parking and parking in the driveway to count towards requirements. So we asked about, asked folks if on-street parking should count towards requirements? Did we think that on-street parking and the driveway could count towards the, the parking requirements for housing? Or only onsite parking counting? And where it landed or the kind of direction that we are getting from the public, is that a combination? Is something that folks can, can support? And those are some of the code refinements that we can be talking about as we pull the code towards a code adoption later in the year. One of the other questions that we, that we asked was the supporting, allowing less than one parking space per dwelling unit. And a little over half of folks said no. So, so this goes to the code recommendation, again, that we'll be talking about a little bit later of sticking to, you know, one parking space per dwelling unit would be the, the parking requirement. And that is also supported by the parking study that we, that we had done as well. So that, that minimum compliance with House Bill two thousand and one seems to be the right direction. Also based on feedback that we, that we received from the public, from CPIC and from the parking study itself. And then we also asked folks some questions about building form. And the idea, this was one of those site plans that had, you know, a building that was long and skinny on the site that was stacked. Or a building that, or a building form like a duplex or a triplex, but that was in multiple buildings. Because that's one of the, one of the ideas that we're pursuing with, with the code is to allow for these housing types to also be represented in detached. in detached units, not just one, a one-building kind of model. And what we saw was that folks preferred either to, that the building would be stacked, so a two-story or two-and-a-half-story type of building, or even, or even more support, seventy percent of the building form to be in multiple buildings, to provide even more flexibility for site planning and site design. And then a related question was the notion of allowing a three-story building if the trade-off was to preserve a mature tree on the site. So, and what we saw was a little over half, so fifty-eight percent did support that. And I think that's the kind of question where we sort of get into some of the context-sensitive types of design standards or site design standards. We're not, as a rule, or sort of in general, not proposing three-story structures. There have been some examples that folks I know are familiar of, or familiar with in parts of Portland, in Selwood, even sort of here near the Woodstock neighborhood, there are three-story kind of condominium-type of developments. But three stories is not something that we're proposing generally as part of the code, but it appears that folks do have some kind of appetite, I guess, for allowing that if the trade-off is to be, to preserve a tree on the property. So, and some interesting information that we gleaned from the public, that there is some support for that. But not, I don't, but again, generally, sort of three stories is not the height that, that we are, that we are moving forward with. Are there any questions about that? I've been trying to remember to pause when I go through these presentations and not barrel through. So are there any questions about any of those findings before I move on? Everyone's, okay. I included some information in the staff report about the relationship between House Bill 2001 and the model code that was developed as part of the House Bill. And the reason that, and the reason for that is that we have, I have fielded some questions about some of the things that are presented within the model code as code language for a House Bill 2001 compliant code. And I just wanted to spend a second just explaining the difference, or kind of how those two go together, just so folks are clear about that. As part of the development of House Bill 2001, a model code was requested and prepared by DLCD for communities to go along with the actual House Bill, the actual ORS, or Division 46, there's all different kinds of names for it, but the actual language of the requirement of the legislation. The model code is intended to provide guidance in implementing House Bill 2001, so it's something that you can look at and see and reference, what kind of code language would be compliant with House Bill 2001. And if a community does not change its code to be House Bill 2001 by the deadline, for us, it's June of 2022, then that model code will apply directly to the city, if the city does not change, change their code. So it serves a couple purposes, it's sort of informational and educational, I guess, but it also will be the code that your community has for middle housing if the community does not amend or adopt a code, a House Bill 2001 compliant code. So the, a city like Milwaukee has choices to adopt the model code as it is, adopt portions of the model code, or adopt a completely new code that still meets House Bill 2001. And what we have been working through with CPIC, with the, with the consultant, you know, working through a lot of these questions with the commission, with city council, is to not adopt the model code, but we, we will be developing code that does, of course, comply with House Bill 2001. And we've been using the model of our recommendations, it's a nice test to kind of go back and look to see what that model code says, provide some great ideas, some good graphics, I use some of the graphics in this presentation just as, you know, illustrative examples of things. So I just wanted to kind of lay that out in case folks ever heard about, or, or had folks ask them, ask you questions about the House Bill, or what the model code is, or what it's for. So that's, that's kind of how, how we're, we're using it, it's something that we're referencing, but we're not adopting it wholesale, but we are using it as a reference guide for our own work. Okay, gonna move into some of the recommendations that we outlined in our, in the staff report, starting off with parking, again, looking back to what we heard in the survey, and we've had some of these discussions with you folks before, but we're sort of moving into, these are recommendations now for, for the code. So the House Bill itself requires that a city cannot require more than one parking space per dwelling unit. Our current code requires one space per dwelling unit and 1.25 spaces per dwelling unit if it's in a multifamily development and the unit is over 800 square feet. So our current code is not compliant with House Bill 2001. The House Bill does not allow you to ask for more than one parking space, no matter how big the unit is. So that's one recommendation, is to bring it back down to one-to-one. Our current code also, and I know we've talked about this before, requires that the required parking space, that off-street parking space, has to be outside the front yard setback. So our code effectively asks for, requires two parking spaces, the driveway, and then the one that's outside the front yard setback, which is typically in a, in a garage. And I think some commissioners that are here on, are on the commission now, remember us having to deal with a couple of variances for folks that wanted to change or sort of retrofit their existing garage into living space, to be able to expand living space, and that required a type-three variance. So the recommendation from the, from CPIC, from, also from the survey, and kind of how we would like to recommend that the code go forward, is to amend the table, again, to require one space per dwelling unit, but also to allow for that required parking space to be inside the front yard setback. So when we say the driveway, that's what we mean, sort of the driveway can be that off-street parking space. This applies to, you know, new development and new middle housing as a way of getting to helping with site design for parking requirements, but it also benefits existing residential units that might have that attached garage that they would like to retrofit into living space, and they would be able to do that without needing a type-three variance to do so. So it's, it's for middle housing, but it's also for existing residential developments as well. So, those are our couple of recommendations, yes, question?
May I interrupt?
Please.
So, right, there was a big to-do when we redid the residential code about snout houses?
Yep.
Right, and so this has a sniff of allowing, right, garages to be set in the front yard setback, which then would, you know, create a snout house
Right.
type design, so it is, it, does that make sense to you?
I under, so you're, the way I will answer your question is that our design standards would continue to not permit, and what you're referring to is the snout house, to have the garage well in front of the house. So those, so the design standard that we have now is that the garage can be no more than five feet in front of the main wall of the house, and that's only if you actually have a front porch. So that's the limitation of our design standards now, and we are not recommending changing that. So, so any house that, so did, I guess I'm not, I'm not sure I understand how you're drawing a, kind of a conclusion with, from, sort of, the driveway can still be the, you know, can still be the parking space.
Correct, so, so what, what in essence would be, is that we would, if we allowed the parking in the front setback, that would eliminate a need for a garage?
Correct.
Okay.
It would, yeah.
And there's no requirement that you have to have a garage, right?
Correct, yeah, we don't require one now, either, it just sort of generally is a garage, or it's a carport or something like that, because it needs to be behind that setback.
Right, but, but it wouldn't even allow a carport, right?
Currently, you would, you would be able to do, you could do a carport instead of a full garage.
In, in, in your front yard?
No, no, not, so as, instead of a garage, you could do a carport, but it still can't be in the front yard, so, no. Correct, but yeah, so it's, you know, it's sort of providing for more living space opportunity within the structure itself, because there isn't that garage space, that can actually be living space now.
And, and so, I guess my other question is, is that, let, let's assume that the world is gonna go electrical vehicle, right? So now we have this issue of everybody's electrical panel being to the outside, right? Because you can't have a garage there, so at least if that's what, right, what your intent is. So now we have these outdoor charging stations, or they're coming out of a plug out of their wall, I guess, or, or something like that. Has that been kind of thought out within transition of this?
Hmm, it's a good question, and we, and we've had a couple of members of CPIC bring up sort of how electric car charging, state chargers, and how does that work, you know, on, on sites like this? I think it's, we're certainly not precluding folks from installing, from installing them. What we're, we would still, our code isn't saying you can't build a garage, we're just saying you don't have to, I guess, that you, you can, you know, build, have the flexibility of being able to have that driveway, or that driveway space be your parking space. But the details of how an electric car charging outlet, or how that works, you know, within, on the building, on the outside, that's, that's, I guess, that's something we can certainly think about. You know, is there something that we need to have in the language to make sure we're not precluding that? Because we certainly don't want to do that. It's more about not requiring extra things, like a garage or on the site. But it's a good point, and you're not the first to bring it up, sort of how are we incorporating electric car or electric vehicle charging stations as part of this? I think we just want to make sure we're not precluding it.
I would just say, Commissioner Hammer, I'm sorry, Commissioner Massey, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question.
I just wanted to comment really quick on that, Commissioner Hammer, I was actually watching this evening that electric vehicles are looking at not needing a direct power up, but rather similar, similar to the way that you would place your phone on top of a pad and through, I'm not sure what it would charge your phone, no wire or direct connection required, similar technologies coming to cars, it's actually out there already. So we might be leapfrogged, go ahead, Commissioner Massey?
Yes, Vera, I, I was interested in the allowing three stories if, to, to, in the interest of saving a mature tree, and, you know, the question comes to that, how do you interpret that? And, you know, I see lots of room for interpretation, I don't know if there's any standards there, but I can also see that as being used as an excuse to build three stories, you know, and as a, you know, as a five-year-old tree, this ten feet tall is a mature tree, you know, who makes that decision? I mean, is that the permitting group within the city? I mean, I'm not sure how you adjudicate those.
It's a great question, and what we were intending through the question was just to try to understand where people were, kind of on the spectrum of, how do they feel about that? But at the same time, we would, we would absolutely have standards to determine that. You know, is a five-year-old tree ten feet tall a mature tree? For the purposes of this code standard, those are the details that we want to work through in sort of our next round of code. So you're bringing up a great question, it was, I absolutely have the same question, and I don't want to be the person deciding it, I want a code to tell me what, you know.
Yeah, just one follow-on question, do you, do you know of any standards in any other communities?
Not off the, I think that's part of the tree code discussion that we'll be having, and so we, we will have answers for all.
Yeah, there'll be some benchmarking going on.
Absolutely, absolutely, no, thanks for bringing it up.
I think, like, Oswego may have standards on that.
For this in particular, to get hype bonuses and stuff? Oh, wow, that's the first I, I didn't realize they had something like that in their tree code.
Our tree code consultant said that, but.
I didn't realize it was part of a hype bonus, so that's, that's important. Great, okay, no, that's good information, yeah. Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Sherman has his hand up.
This is Chair Loesvelt. I was, Vera, I was, maybe, maybe this is more of a comment on additional kind of CPIC outreach that might occur around parking specifically. I feel like some of the parking discussion has really been framed around kind of trade-offs with trees, and not so much kind of getting into some of the housing affordability kinds of issues, you know, so for example, you know, we hear, we, we see in a, you know, survey of a hundred and twenty-two people where about fifty percent say, no, we don't want to eliminate parking minimum requirements. And yet, we haven't asked a question like, something like this, like, would you support the city allowing housing without driveways or garages if it meant those houses cost thirty thousand dollars less? I would be very interested to hear what community members would have to kind of say about, about choices like that. And we do know that the cost of parking is, you know, can have a substantial impact on, on the, on the cost of, of development. So if we're having additional kind of rounds of questions, I would encourage us to kind of maybe ask a more pointed question about, about some of those issues, especially because I think we also from the parking study that was done, which I think I might have gotten a little bit of a deeper dive on, because I sat in as a substitute at that CPIC meeting. If I'm recalling correctly, the consultant said that there is ample supply of parking on street. Like, you could take all the vehicles off of all the private property and put it on the street, and there's still substantial parking left. So I would just kind of encourage us to kind of keep those things in mind, especially when, you know, we have a lot of existing policy, you know, in the comp plan, for example, I mean, policy seven dot two dot three, which talks about reducing parking to increase affordability, policy seven dot three dot eight, which talks about reducing parking close to light rail and transit, policy eight dot two two, which is, you know, changing parking standards to increase active transportation and to promote transportation demand management. And then we also have things in the climate action plan about lowering parking ratios, like, in some ways, I think that on the minimums, we should maybe go to zero, and I believe the consultant even said that, the parking consultant even said that, and so, would just kind of encourage us to, to think a little bit more broad there, especially when a minimum requirement of zero doesn't mean that developers still wouldn't build parking.
Right.
It's just not that we would require them to kind of build it. So those were just some of my, my own thoughts on, on the, on the parking topic specifically.
Yeah, and if I could, just to respond to that, I think, you know, sort of the, kind of right out of the gate right now, we're sort of doing this kind of one-to-one parking piece of it, and the, sort of the tree example was, was one example. But we did see, I think, enough support for this, for a combination of being able to use on-street parking as part of the minimum, you know, requirement. I think you're right, the parking study, I think, gave us some great metrics to be able to support that. It wouldn't, I, there, it's not, it's sort of neighborhood-wide. I think there are certain streets that have certain challenges when it comes to on-street parking, and so those, that's sort of part of that menu of, of options, I think, when we're dealing with these kind of site design standards, and, but being able to use on-street parking as part of the overall parking picture is something that we definitely want to explore, sort of in that, in that next round, so that's great feedback, thank you very much.
And maybe just a quick response, you know, I would say that if, if demand for on-street parking ever became so great, we have tools that we could use, you know, such as permitting, and we could actually use permitted on-street parking to help improve our infrastructure and repave streets, or, or other things that community members might want. So just want to remind ourselves that while we currently don't use those tools, those kinds of tools also do exist.
Yep.
I'm gonna move to Commissioner Earn, but before we do, I would, I would say that I agree with you, Commissioner Sherman, but I, I've heard community members and myself concerned that if we do look to on-street parking to make sure that the infrastructure follows, and, and as you mentioned, to make sure that we're building sidewalks, building curves, building proper drainage, thinking about how water drains and where stormwater is being channeled, channeled to, or how it's a pervious paving or impervious, etc., and not just simply relying on on-street parking as, as maybe improved or unimproved in any given case. Commissioner Earn, you've been patient, go ahead.
I just wanted to kind of build on the parking and communication, or questions for the public, or kind of the general thinking in two directions. One, just from my experience working in high schools and with a lot of teens, and probably a lot of you might have had this experience as well, there is a larger portion of younger generation that does not look at personal vehicles the same way as my generation did, like, it was a huge rite of passage, and did, like it was a huge rite of passage and everybody got their own car when I was date myself here a little bit, but yeah, a lot of, I'm not saying everybody, I'm just saying that a lot of the younger generation doesn't look at personal vehicles the same way or owning the need to own a personal vehicle. So just as we're kind of watching or planning for things in five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, I think we also have to look at the culture of owning an individual car as opposed to like where I think a larger portion of than now of the population will likely go to more of a subscription based service. So either autonomous vehicles that will pick you up and drop you off, you know, on your scheduled route to work or wherever you go. Prefer, you know, eventually we'll kind of get there or or kind of a subscription based Uber, Lyft, that kind of thing. And that in itself will reduce the need for a lot of parking because those cars will just kind of go slot themselves places and then and then run to pick up people. So I just, I wanted to kind of point out that there, we're in a transitional time right now where we still do have, we do have parking challenges at times in different areas. And that's going to be a challenge, but I do feel like culturally we are shifting to, you know, less of the population having individual cars or multiple cars. Like, it may be, you know, more standard for a household to have one car instead of two cars, you know, or three cars. And and then have a subscription based service for the family that is more of a ride share or.
I was thinking that, you know, along the lines of, I think, what you're both saying is if we, you know, go to a minimum zero, like Commissioner Sherman is suggesting, then you let developers and and others kind of let the market drive the need for parking, right? And let the market kind of set the value of privately owned and parking places. So which has a benefit, but but it also, it it makes it more affordable to build, more of cost effective to buy. But it, there has to be a balance with the impact then that's placed on infrastructure and access to alternative transportation that has to meet the reality is, it's not that there are less people. It's that those people are relying on other methods. Two things need to go hand in hand. You can't. And I don't think you're suggesting this, Commissioner Sherman, but you can without those other things in place. Commissioner Ernst, you have your hand up?
This is fun. I've been waiting 15 years to have this discussion. So no, this is, this is great, and I I appreciate us getting into these details. You know, we we do have several policies that call for reducing parking in the name of affordability. We also have, I mean, if you you just have to, you know, respect the the statistics here. You know, to what Commissioner Earth's point, the younger generation, even if it's, so, okay, so here's the deal, is that we had about like the boomers and the millennials are roughly the same size populations, right? It's now tilted in favor of millennials, but you know, still, you know, 65 ish, you know, million people, you know, huge cohort. About eight to 12% of boomers who don't have a car. And there's about 33% of millennials who are like, I don't need a car. That's a huge difference and proportionally. And 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 so when when you look at the fact that our built environment has been built up with policies that have been largely driven by the preferences of baby of the baby boomer generation, we have a built environment that is expecting car ownership rates to be basically saturated. And yet we have this huge cohort, we have a cohort of millennials of whom three times the number of boomers who don't have cars. You know, the three times that many of the millennials that don't have or are not even interested in cars. And so, you know, I mean, seriously, you know, we have to think, you know, that's a huge shift. There's these monumental shifts in numbers, in raw numbers of preferences there. And we can't continue to apply what are turning, you know, what are are, you know, becoming outdated policies to a new generation with a new market with new preferences. I mean, there's, we're going to, we are already overbuilt with parking. And if we continue on this trajectory, we are going to way overbuild parking. And, you know, and that's why I think that our policies that, you know, parking should be easily converted to other uses are important. You know, and and I just, I love that we're talking about letting people convert their garages into living space. Yes, housing for people, not housing for cars. That should be the policy focus. And the, you know, and the idea is anyway, I just, I'm really on board with this discussion. I'm really happy we're having it, and I think everyone's making a really good point. And I just want to make sure that we know that, you know, these policy ideas are not just rooted in, you know, obscure reports, you know, from, you know, what from urban preferences of, you know, teenagers or whatever. I mean, these are, this real data that's been around for a long time is in pointing a certain direction and then has, you know, solidified in that direction. We need to respect the data and actually leverage that data to help us make good decisions about, you know, what our built environment is going to be like in the next 20 years. And and overbuilding all this parking and at a one to one ratio, I think, is is going to be problematic in the long run. The one thing we haven't talked about yet is the parking determination or park parking modification, parking determination review. I was looking over that, you know, on my other screen right now, and this is something that came up at the CPIC meeting. There is an opportunity, there's a pathway, a discretionary pathway or a pathway for discretionary review to reduce the minimum parking standard for developments. And I would just ask staff. Seems to me that someone could reduce parking to zero under this determination. And so if you were to come in armed with data presently, you know, we we make you go through a type two review, you know, with a staff level review and but ultimately, if you can make your case for less parking than what the minimum required amount is, you might be able to get, you know, you should be able to get that. I just wanted to know how do we maybe make this a little easier? Or, you know, is there a way to add a little bit more certainty to this? So that we can draw the kind of, you know, investment that where someone will, you know, invest in a process and get a design together for a development that could be really affordable and then have some confidence that they'll be able to actually get the parking reduced to make that work. And so far, we've, you know, basically just heard horror stories of how that's not possible. But how possible is that, you know, under the current code? Or do we need to look at modifications to or amendments to the parking modification?
Commissioner Ernst, do you have you have a comment to make? Did we lose her? No, she just put it down.
I just put the wrong one down anyways. I just have a quick comment just to add on there because I I think you were talking or you touched base on like population growth and, you know, more people still need to get in more places. I just want to touch touch a bit on the technology of, you know, obviously GBS, but but AI planning, traffic planning. So when we do go to autonomous ride share services or just, you know, Uber and Lyft kind of evolve into more of a subscription base for a larger percentage of the population. And with more people going with kind of smart cars and that kind of thing, we're we're basically, you either get in your car and you say your destination or you plug it in. More of that will be interconnected and it will reduce, AI will be able to reduce traffic jams and reduce and and make the flow of traffic more efficient, thus reducing the amount of cars that are actually on the road at any given time. So even though our population and density is, you know, will will likely rise and go up. And we still will have more people, you know, needing to get places and in vehicles. The fact that some of the subscription will be ride share and, you know, bus service, that kind of public transportation, shared cars, shared services, that also will reduce actual vehicles on the road. But just the technology itself, the way that it's developing, being able to even from satellite predict where traffic jams will be and and people kind of having more of a subscription service. Come pick me up at eight o'clock and I go here every day for my, you know, transportation to and from work. The planning that will be able to be done with the technology in the future will likely reduce traffic jams, traffic signals. I mean, in the more distant future, it's likely that we won't even have traffic signals so much anymore that, you know, we will have a system that is much more autonomous than what we have now. So, um, so anyways, that's, I just, I do enjoy this conversation. Transportation, my dad worked for ODOT for my whole life pretty much. So, um, transportation has been kind of in my family for a while, but that's all.
That's interesting. Commissioner Kozabadi?
Thank you. I I actually just wanted to comment on Commissioner Edge and Commissioner Loesfeld. I do like the idea, or Chair Loesfeld, excuse me. I do like the idea of being able to have that as a possible type two review of maybe not having them or not having to require the one parking space. Obviously, it depends on a lot of factors, walkability, other transportation options, things like that. But I also, you know, I I think Chair Loesfeld hit it on the head that whatever it is that we decide, the infrastructure part has to be key. Because I know, you know, for example, in my neighborhood, my wife and I love to walk around, but we don't have any sidewalks or walkability isn't that great. So having the parking that we do have is great. But, you know, the infrastructure is a key piece in regards to that, having the sidewalks, having that. That's going to be big, bike lanes, you know, those kind of things that where people can feel safe about the alternative modes of transportation they're taking is going to be key, I think. But yeah, I do like where we're headed and even having the on street parking as considered as a requirement is great. And, you know, but being able to give them the opportunity of having zero, as Commissioner Sherman mentioned before as well. I think this is a great discussion to have.
Yeah, I I agree. Commissioner Hummer, you've been quiet too long.
Well, I have my hand raised. I I do have a, I do have a question and maybe I just didn't find it in the report or I didn't read it thoroughly enough. But can you explain what is an on street parking credit?
I I think what and what we're, what we're, what we mean by that is that you're get, you get credit for. So you're required, it's basically a way of saying your your required parking space is on the street. So you're getting credit for your parking by putting, by having it on street. That's all that means.
I have a philosophy in life, and that is that people are generally lazy. Okay, so the garage exists, right? For the simple fact that people don't like to get wet and they don't like to walk very far to their front door. So when we think about this on street parking or even only allowing one unit, it seems to me that the 20 foot setback actually serves no purpose. That you could, now you can make it a 10 foot setback really easily. And, you know, because you're required, and then you can have more room in your backyard, depending on what it is, or you can make your lot smaller. And so I know there might be some resistance to that because people like uniformity. I I understand that. And especially on, so what, I'll take the big development down in Lake Oswego, you know, where Manzamas is and stuff like that. So there's a huge, they're, they're, I don't, they're not quad, I don't know what you call them, but they're just townhomes, townhomes, I guess is the right word there. And there's must be, I don't know, 75 units in these townhomes where they, where your front door is facing the street. But of course, there's a parking lot in the back with a garage that's kind of tucked in on there. And so it's kind of a half level, that kind of thing. And I think when we start looking at, you know, designs like quadrplexes and stuff like that, access to, if we move it forward, right, because people don't want to have to walk 20 feet in the rain with a baby and a bag of groceries to get to their front door, but they may be willing to do 10 feet and or be able to park a little bit closer. Or, right, allow that parking to kind of be in the back or sunken, right? If you want to call it sunken. Or integrated into the, you know, more into the built environment, if you want to call it so. The parking does raise up and and I appreciate Commissioner Ernst and Commissioners Edge and Commissioner Sherman and Commissioner Kozabadi and Chair Loesfeld's enthusiasm about the future. But don't forget that in the 60s, everybody thought by now we'd be having flying cars. The technology is 50 years away from what you guys are talking, at least 50 years away. We don't even know if we have enough room in the in space to be able to have all these satellites, to be able to pinpoint a certain traffic city all the time to rotate slowly enough. And I mean, think about the logistics of the whole thing. So and then I appreciate the fact that, you know, we have this study that 33%, 33% of the millennials probably still live at home in their basement with their parents as well, so they don't need to buy a car. So there there are these different, right, kind of, kind of trigger mechanisms. And I think that we should realize that, you know what, parking is not as expensive as what we make it, the garage maybe, right? But a little patch of area to put a car onto a lot is not all that bad. You've got to run your water line, your drainage line and everything else. You hate to put it under soft soil. It's much easier to compact it into the the driveway to hook up to your hookup anyways. Most of your hookups are designed that way. You got to dig it all up. Now you got to, you know, plant a whole bunch of it. So, I mean, really, all you're talking about is starting in some gravel, a little bit of concrete or blacktop. So that development, the pad itself is not all that expensive. So I like the idea about having one parking spot for residential housing, right? I I think with the duplexes, maybe one each, I I'm not really quite sure why we say, oh, with a quadplex, you only need one if the lot is only 3,000 square feet less. Because are you assuming that people that live in less than 1,000 square foot apartment can afford cars or? So I I just, I I don't get all the logic to it. But I do think shortening up the space from the house, allowing not only parking to be parallel to the house, but it can be perpendicular as well. Right? Let's think about that. So we call it off street parking, but you could, you know, cut a little area from your curb and just have a little parking pad in front of your house in that way, which then still reserves, you know, a grassy area instead of this straight strip. I just think that there's a lot of different ways to kind of design this. And then I think we're limiting ourselves on old thought processes and old designs when we can be as inventive as possible, I guess.
Thank you. Commissioner Massey? You're on mute, sir.
Thank you, Carol. No, thank you, Chair Loesfeld. This is a really interesting discussion, and I don't have any great insight into the future. Probably if someone had asked me a year and a half ago about reducing parking places, I would probably be in the amen corner. But I'm a little bit more skeptical now after the pandemic because the pandemic has shown that people flee, you know, public transit. And car sales were up, used car prices were up. And I don't know if we will return to pre pandemic conditions or not. But it kind of showed that people wanted their own, you know, enclosure to drive themselves to where they needed to go. I'm not saying that's the right thing to do or the wrong thing to do. I'm just saying it's what we saw over the last year and a half. So, you know, I'm just, it's just food for thought. Secondly, I I think, you know, I would be with Commissioner Ernt and the idea of the ride sharing being the wave of the future because people like to be picked up in their, you know, at their, you know, in their front door or their. or their curb out front and that kind of thing, and not have to, you know, go through some intermediate step to get to public transportation or anything like that. And so, you know, I think that there's huge potential there for reducing parking requirements, but providing what I'll call dense transportation. Because you can get picked up and dropped off at your door rather than going to some central collection spot or drop-off spot. And I will tell you, if you're, I have some experience and a fairly unique way of doing this. And if you're so interested, I would tell you to type into your browser "slugging Washington DC". And for decades there, people in Washington have basically come together at like existing bus stops, and two, three, four people get into a car with people they, you know, they don't know, and they go to some central location. I did it myself for, you know, two tours in the Pentagon. It is the most incredibly effective transportation system you've ever seen. And, you know, gosh, with technology being what it is right now, I'm surprised we're not doing it everywhere. So those are just some observations about transportation, because I don't think we've got it. I don't think we're all knowing at this point.
So it's all about the financial incentives to your travel, is that right, Commissioner Massey?
Okay, Vera, I think you've got a lot of feedback, once again, from the group.
Yep, on parking, there's still more, though.
Is there anything more?
Yes, there is. That's okay. This was great, thank you, everybody. I'm, I'd be very happy to reduce the parking requirement, so, yes.
I wanted you to bring up the one thing, though. There was the idea of having like a clustered parking on the street, like angled parking, like having kind of a chicane design to, you know, quiet residential streets. And could you talk about that a little bit? Because we didn't get that in the materials, and I think that's a brilliant idea.
Yeah, there, so as we're, as we're thinking about parking, we'd also, we also think about on-street parking, but also street design too, right? And so that all, kind of, all goes together with it. And we've had, we had some comments that came in talking about this idea of a car park, you know, for a neighborhood. So, you know, a parking area for an entire neighborhood, doesn't need to be right in front or on the site. And kind of going with that, the idea of some alternative street design that might allow for angled parking on a street as opposed to parallel parking. Also, the idea of alternative street designs, depending on what street, or, you know, what is the functional classification of your street and that sort of thing. The, one of the examples, and we've had conversations with Steve Adams, a city engineer, and sort of been thinking about street classifications, the sort of the street design standards for various streets. One of the examples, and our consultant, Marcy McInnelli, is really intrigued with the Island Station, Neighborhood Greenway, street design as an example, because we have a very specific example of a very specific street design for that area that achieves very specific purposes. And so there was, so we've had some discussions with Steve Adams about these ideas of having alternative street cross-sections in certain neighborhoods. And I think that's something that we can absolutely be talking about. He's familiar with it. He already has what we call a low-volume neighborhood street cross-section. And so if it's, I think it's, I want to say it's like 15 or fewer houses, or 10, I can't remember which. But he has the flexibility to kind of require, you know, certain things or not certain things on a street if it's servicing, you know, a small number of homes. So this idea that it has to be a 50-foot right-of-way with sidewalks and curb and, you know, all of these things, isn't necessarily the case. It really, again, we're trying to be more context-sensitive to what we're requiring in certain areas. So the, if we can make, I keep thinking about this idea of having clear and objective flexibility in our code, but if there's a way to figure out how we can do that, that we can get down to, you know, actual property or street level for every project, but make it clear and objective, but have it respond to what's happening there. I would be very excited if our code could do that. But I think to your point, Commissioner Edge, that idea of being able to have alternative designs as part of the overall review process and those street design cross-sections, I think it's something we're certainly open to. We just need to figure out how do we build that into the code? How do we get the transportation side of it, the public works side of it? Which is why we have, we're having conversations with Peter Passerelli and Steve, you know, Adams, to try and figure out how do we connect the code with the public work standards to have them all talk together. But everyone is really open to, you know, to the idea, our code is probably going to come first, and then other things are going to catch up, but we're going to try to sort of layer all of these different things together so that we can get them going. But yeah, it's, we've had a lot of interesting discussions sort of back of house in the office kind of thinking about these other things. But I think that, and that parking modification process that we have is a way of, and maybe we need to tweak some of the approval criteria, kind of, you know, how that works exactly. We have had folks come to us with project ideas of zero parking, you know, and how, and so what do we need as far as information to be able to provide that? So that we don't kind of, we don't want to have, we don't want to create a nightmare either, and have, you know, sort of the first project that comes in with no parking, you know, be a disaster. Like, we want to make sure that we've, you know, we're sort of kind of getting into the swing of it and how, and how we deal with it. But that way, we can be, we don't have to consider, we don't have to think about every conceivable, you know, idea within the code, you know, that that modification gives people the flexibility to be creative as well. It would be nice, you know, to kind of cover a few things. But if we can rely on that modification process for someone who's truly out of the, you know, thinking out of the box, and it's just something we haven't considered, we've got that opportunity to do that.
Okay, we've got a couple hands raised. Commissioner Hemmer, you want to go first?
Yeah, I want to say that that is brilliant. Everybody knows my philosophy that, you know, the less regulation and rules, the more inventive we all can really be. And I think the way that you kind of handle it is that you just say, hey, you have to provide some sort of onsite parking, right? And then you just draw up a couple of pictures of what that can look like. And I would, I would be thrilled to see somebody write in a quadplex, let's take a quadplex. Somebody cut out, you know, put the curb indented in 10 feet, right? And then just put in some angled parking there, and not have to have the garage, not have to do all that. And then you still have, well, I would probably put the building still a little closer, but then you would still have, you know, this 10 feet of yard. And it's well within your 20 feet of your setback, right? I mean, it's still there, it still follows the rule, right? If you just require one parking spot per unit inside the 20-foot setback, or inside, within the 20-foot setback or beyond, right? Then everybody can come up with really imaginable things.
Commissioner Sherman?
Thanks, Chair Lozavell. I was just going to kind of ask the question. It seems like the TSP update could be a place where we could think about, think about, sorry, think about designations for alternative street designs. And could also be a place where, I don't think we have any existing requirements for kind of transportation demand management strategies. But I've often thought if a developer wanted and was, say, on high-frequent transit line and wanted to go to zero, and was willing to provide free slash discounted bus passes to residents for a period of time, call it 10 years, like, that seems like a trade we should pretty seriously consider making. And so, you know, maybe there's other spaces like that in the TSP update to be thinking about some of those, those other strategies.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead, Vera.
Okay. And Commissioner Sherman, I can tell you, we have had those exact conversations as we're getting ready for the TSP. So that's, that's definitely on the, on the table. Okay, if we can, let's talk about the actual zones. We can move on. We've talked about this with you before, this recommendation of consolidated zones. So what you see, and these aren't the final names for the zones, it's just what we're calling them for now, that the R1 are the orange zones. So where we currently have our higher-density zones, R1 through R3. And then the purple that you see are, would be what we would call R2 for now. Those are our R5 through R10 zones. So taking our eight residential zones down to two, and consolidating them this, this way. And as part of this conversation, part of your staff report also included what would be the standards within those zones. And so this chart was in, was in your, in your staff report. And, well, the, kind of the big key question here that I have, and this came up with at CPIC last week as well. So some of the key ideas would be as far as the lot sizes go, that we're recommending our idea of a 1,500-square-foot lot. That's the minimum lot size that's in the House Bill for townhomes. So that's a lot size that would be for a townhouse or a row house development. We're also recommending that that would be the lot, minimum lot size for a cottage, if you were, if it was a cottage cluster that actually had the cottages on their own lots, as opposed to a one-lot cottage cluster with them sort of being in a condominium. But then the other idea, sort of the bigger idea, I think, or the key question, is reducing the minimum lot size for a single-unit home and/or a duplex, because duplexes have to be permitted on the same lot, lot size as a single-unit home, and reduce that to 3,000 square feet. And that that would be sort of the base minimum lot size for a single unit, for a single-unit home. This was something that came out of a discussion that we had had sort of internally, because the House Bill provides for us the minimum lot sizes for various housing types. 5,000 square feet for a triplex, 7,000 square feet for a quadplex, or a cottage cluster. So this idea of, well, what do we do with the detached single-dwelling, you know, the single-unit home? And 3,000 square feet is a number that's in our current code. We currently allow a single-unit home to be built on an existing lot of record, that is 3,000 square feet. And part of this conversation came also from this idea of, how do we continue to work towards reducing the price or the cost of housing? You know, and some of the things that drive the cost of housing, or that affect the price of a home, lot size, the unit size, and any regulatory barriers. And so one of the things that we've heard a lot of is this goal of increasing the opportunity for home ownership. And if this is a way of getting there, you know, smaller lots, smaller homes, providing that opportunity for that, what we used to call a starter home. I don't know what that is anymore. But if the lots are really big, it's going to be a big house, and it's unlikely to be a starter home. So this idea of kind of coming, bringing things back towards these smaller lots, which would reduce all of the, you know, the size of all of those things. This might be one of those places where, you know, we think about, well, what are the parking requirements for a lot? That's 3,000 square feet. But that's sort of the, one of the key ideas here. And so in the screen where you see the red circles, this chart kind of had these options of kind of what would those development standards be, you know, what would be those lot sizes? And just so that everyone sort of understood what, what were the associated housing types that would be permitted on a lot of those sizes. But the key question is this idea of a 3,000-square-foot lot for a single-unit home or a duplex. And I'd be curious to know what folks think about that idea. And I think, yeah, so we, you know, and then we have those associated, you know, development standards. This, we will be having a bigger discussion with you later about how we, how we regulate the bulk or the massing of structures on these lots. Certainly, our current code does that with lot coverage and setbacks and sideyard height plane and those kinds of things. We're still, there still seems to be some concern about sort of the massing of structures on a site. There's another way of doing that, we can be talking about FAR instead. And so there's another, that's, that's, that's going to be a topic that we will be workshopping with you sort of in the next round of code, as an alternative way of regulating the bulk of structures on a lot. But sort of this, but, you know, this, this key idea of standards, of how do we figure out the standards for abutting lots? We've been talking about this idea of having these smaller lots, these 3,000-square-foot lots, having the existing R5 standard, so 20-foot front and rear yard setback, five on either side. But if they're next to a lot that is in sort of one of the larger lot classifications, then we could be applying some of those standards. As sort of, you were talking in the previous hearing about these transition measures. This is a way of, so that, you know, on those sides, maybe they have a slightly larger setback to kind of blend those lot sizes and those standards together. This is something that we're, you know, they're thinking about as a way of kind of understanding what can happen, you know, on these lots. So that was something that we were thinking about as a way of applying standards to these kind of super-small lots, I guess. But, and as we talk about the standards, you know, I just wanted to, we have some graphics, just again, understanding kind of what's, you know, what's currently allowed. This whole idea of the Jell-O mold and understanding how the sideyard height plane really affects the massing that's happening at the, at the property lines. So this line here is identifying this dotted white line. This is, this is what we currently still regulate as the sideyard height plane. So this massing here outside of that line would not be permitted. So, you know, and also, this is basically a three-story building, so we wouldn't be allowing that anyway. But sort of this idea of, again, trying to balance the concerns that folks have about the size and the mass of these, of structures on some of these lots. So we're trying to get at it from some of these development standards, potentially FAR instead. But we can, we will, again, we'll be talking about that later. But if I could, if it's okay, if I can sort of land here for a second, I'd like to, I'd like to hear from the commission about your thoughts on this minimum lot size idea. I know Commissioner Edge brought up a really, I thought, a very cool and radical idea at the CPIC meeting, and you had some support there as well on that. But I'd be curious to know, this is a pretty big departure from what we currently have. Never mind the House Bill 2001 requirements, but this idea of coming down to a 3,000-square-foot lot. We think it's, it's certainly worth discussing, but we do think that it's something that kind of helps get to more opportunities for housing in our, in our neighborhoods. So I'd be curious to hear what folks think about that.
I can jump in here, if that's okay?
Yes, go ahead.
I fully support it. I have watched Milwaukee real estate for my entire life to be fair, pretty much. I think my mom started me on it when I was maybe six years old. And so it has been a hobby and kind of a passion of mine to just watch the real estate market in Clarkland County, but particularly in Milwaukee for a very long time. And there is not a whole lot of options for houses with smaller lots. And frankly, that's, if I was in the market right now, that's what I would be looking for, because we have a very large yard, and it's a lot of work. And I would frankly prefer a smaller, a smaller lot. And so I think that I would fully support, I do think that there's a need for just a smaller lot sizes, especially for, you know, single-unit houses, or in duplexes. I think, you know, I lived in a duplex for five years in Milwaukee, and we really enjoyed it. So, and we had a small, like a nice little yard there too. So I think, I won't get off the topic too much, but I just wanted to touch too about the, how that would tie in with the potentially moving up to the 10 feet instead of the 20 feet in the yard to maybe give the backyard a little, because that would make more sense. If I was looking for a house, I don't want a big front yard. I want a very minimal space in the front yard, and I'd rather have that added on to the back in a smaller lot size. So I just wanted, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Commissioner Kosherbadi?
Thank you, Chair. I just like to say, I also agree. I like this idea of the small lot sizes in terms of an affordability standpoint, you know. I bought my house here in Milwaukee in 2019, and, you know, every house was like a And, you know, every house was like a bidding war. And for, you know, a new couple, a young couple, or even, you know, somebody single who's looking to buy a home, that's tough. It's really difficult. It's already difficult to qualify for the loan. It makes it even harder to try to find a home to even afford. So, and obviously we've seen the market, we've seen where it's going. There's, you know, prices have gone up quite a bit and it's probably going to continue to go up. So it's going to continue to price people out. And if a smaller lot size and a smaller home could potentially change that, then I think it's yet another opportunity that we should, we should take, take a look at. And if we're going to do that, I think the setback as well, as Commissioner Ernt mentioned, maybe with the smaller lots, reducing the setbacks to allow maybe more living space or more space in the back. Because, you know, 20 feet on a 3,000 square foot lot, as opposed to 25,000, 10,000 square foot lot makes a huge difference. So, you know, if you cut that back, then, you know, you increase again more living space. So, yeah, I definitely think that this is a direction that we should discuss further. Absolutely.
Mr. Ernt, is your hand still up?
No. I would, I would agree with, it seems like the natural progression of things, especially with the discussion that we had about the flag lots. It just seems to make absolute sense. And I think that's, you know, that's where you're going next. But I, I would fully support this idea. And I think it'll do a lot of really great things for housing and affordability in our area. And it just makes a whole lot of sense. Commissioner Heimner, what are your thoughts?
I would allow 1,000 square foot lots up to whatever size that they want to have. And I would allow all of these categories, no matter what the size of the lot is. And then what you do on the backend is that you incentivize the things that you, that you, that you need at the time to convince the market not to maximize out the house for the biggest sellable value. So I, I find setbacks really kind of odd. Because if you look at my neighborhood, there isn't any consistency in setbacks anyways. So I don't care if it's zero lot line. I don't care if the house gets, if somebody wants to build their house all the way in the back. Who cares, right? Let them go ahead and have some freedom. Yeah, give them five feet maybe, right? Maybe make the rule five feet. But, you know, allow them to build an 800 square foot house in a 1,000 square foot lot. Why not? It's a big deal. And so if we allow 1,000 up to a million acres, I don't care what you say. But, and allow all building types on there. So triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, blah, blah, blah. And allow that in the flag lots. And don't worry about this balance between this R10 and this R5 or what we call it now. That's just, this is silliness to care about what your neighbor looks like. Because what happens if that person splits that lot now into two R5s, right? Or until, and then it doesn't match anymore. So I think it's kind of a goofy idea to kind of work it that way and a lot of work. It's just a lot of work for somebody to kind of figure all that out. So, yeah, I would say just run the gamut and allow whatever you want. And I would go down to 1,000 square feet myself. You know me, I, I believe in less regulation and more incentives.
Okay. Vera, you want to keep going?
Sure. It sounds like we don't really even need minimum lot sizes, which sounds like a familiar comment from the CPIC meeting, I think.
Chair Loesfeld, may I?
Go ahead. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
That's all right. I was, I was slow on the draw. Just a few kind of questions, because I think I also support kind of going down to a 3,000 foot minimum lot or lot size there. But I guess I was just kind of thinking it through, maybe from like a development standard perspective. And what do we, what do we do? Or maybe back up, like thinking about some of our, I'll call them super blocks down in my part of Arden Wald where I live, where, you know, you could potentially, you know, scrape a house and put five or six 3,000 foot square lots. And so are we punching dead end roads like down, down one property line? And are we going to try and, from a street grid, try and connect those all the way through or what? So I, I think that I just kind of have some, like, I guess, some urban design questions? Or we, or would you, because you could also conceivably see these like dead ends shooting off multiple times down a block. If somebody really wanted to go full hog on, on a density kind of approach. And from a kind of city transportation perspective, like, is that, is that desired? Or is that not necessarily desired? So I think that's just kind of a thing to think about. And I don't know where that gets thought about, but wanted to kind of flag, flag that.
No, it's, it's a good point from a land division standpoint. And our, even our current land division standards require connectivity. So we, our code, actually, you can't build a dead end street without a really good reason. And we actually don't build a lot of cul-de-sacs. They may look like cul-de-sacs now, but they actually have stubs and ready to connect to something else. So our code actually requires, as part of any kind of a subdivision, that you show that you're not precluding someone else from actually being able to connect and divide as well. So it takes some time potentially. So, but this idea of, this may be, I'm wondering if this is a way that we might get to some of our sort of alley access too. If, you know, if a couple of folks get together and, and it might create some, actually some really interesting land division opportunities with this smaller lot to be able to put something together like that. It's a great point. But our codes really want connectivity like that. So we won't get sort of this stream of cul-de-sacs everywhere.
Totally. And then just one other kind of piece of feedback on the draft map, if you will, kind of zoning, zoning map. It sounds like you might have been tuning into the first half of, of tonight. But I think I would just encourage staff to not necessarily take existing zoning designations and scribble them out and write in whatever, you know, the new low density and the new medium and high density. But we actually like look at the designation kind of by property. You know, some planners that, that I talk with in professional circles really do kind of encourage thinking about the same zoning on
Across the street.
Side of the street. And so if we're going to go through map changes, and we are, let's look at those, let's look parcel by parcel as we're thinking about some of the new low and the new medium and high density zones so that we can reduce any conflicts like we had a little bit earlier tonight.
Right. That was a great point. Thank you.
Thanks.
I just wanted to add real quick. I read a study a decade or something ago about plans, you know, little urban areas and how oftentimes they would actually put in a lot of cul-de-sacs or dead ends and then only have a limited amount of entrances into kind of the planned communities because they've done studies or shown that that can help reduce crime or help. So I understand that the traffic part and the connectivity part. I just wanted to add that in. I remember reading that years ago, that, that there are some arguments, I think, for having those cul-de-sacs or those kind of dead end areas because sometimes mass connectivity to a lot of those different, you know, walking paths is one thing, I think. But there's some for the kind of driving out and around. I read a study years ago, so I just wanted to add that in there. Everybody's talking about.
Okay.
Oh, thank you. Yep, and I just had a couple more things to just sort of confirm with, with the group if I could. One other, oh wait, sorry, this guy. There we go. And hopefully you're seeing duplex sketches. So kind of talking about the housing type and sort of the key question is confirming if there's support for attached or detached options for any of these housing types. These are the drawings that are included in the model code for duplexes. So, you know, the over under stacked duplex or the side by side duplex or two separate structures duplex. And the model code also includes, so examples of sketches of how triplexes or quadplexes could be handled. What we heard from both CPIC and from our surveys with the public is the idea of allowing for both detached and attached options. It's just about the number of units, not how they're put together, basically. So wanted to understand from the planning commission, this idea of, yes, do we think it's okay to have both attached and detached options? We did hear some notes from folks just understanding kind of what design standards would apply to attached versus detached options. There is sort of this other kind of layer of conversation about, well, what's a duplex and what's a house with an ADU? What's the difference? It's, that's sort of this other layer of conversation that will be happening kind of in our next round as we talk about nomenclature or terminology. Depending on who you talk to or what agency you talk to, sometimes the names of things actually matter when it comes to SDCs and how things are permitted and that kind of thing. And we want to make sure that we're consistent with other agencies for now. If we need to go back in and change things, we can. But we don't want to make things more complicated by trying to streamline, you know, too many things if we're not being consistent with how other folks are talking about things. And then this leads me kind of back to while we're, if we're still calling things ADUs, then we just sort of wanted to understand what folks think about this idea of ADUs with middle housing types. Right now, our code only allows an ADU with a single unit home. So a question to think about is how should our code be addressing ADUs when you're talking about middle housing types? You know, a duplex with an ADU, a triplex with an ADU? Is there a limit? Should we really just be thinking about the number of units on a lot? As opposed to, is it a duplex? Is it a duplex with an ADU? Who cares? Is it just three units? These are some of the, and we don't have to answer that question now, but these are some of the things that keep layering on our questions as we go through some of the, the code. It's not a House Bill 2001 issue. It's more, the more we dig into these things, the more questions we keep raising for ourselves. So a preview of what we'll be talking about with you over the summer as we get into some of these details. But
Commissioner Kocferbadi has his hand up.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure if it's specific, but.
Yeah, sorry. Just a quick question. Was there a reason why the, the question came up is whether you'd want to provide one or the other as far as it came to the, the duplexes? Like side by side or was there a reason like?
Oh, no, it was more of a question of because the, a community, we have the flexibility to allow any of these middle housing types as detached options as well. And so as we're writing the code, we want to understand if that's something that folks want to do. Otherwise, generally, these housing types are attached. So a duplex is attached. It can be over, under, or side by side. That doesn't matter. But the idea of allowing a duplex to be two separate, you know, little homes on, on a lot, that's a different idea. It's, it's providing even more flexibility on the lot. And that's why we're asking that question, because that's kind of a new thing. Most, they're usually attached units for a duplex, a triplex or a quadplex. So that's why we were asking that. Certainly lot coverage and, you know, those kinds of things still would apply, whether it's four separate things or one, or one structure. But that's what we wanted to understand. If the concept was something that we had support for from the commission, then we could work on what the standards would be for that. Thoughts? Thumbs up to detached or what do we think?
I have a quick question. Is there, was there a discussion on, does it reduce the cost of building if it's attached versus detached?
I think with shared walls, with utilities, it's, you know, and you're dealing with foundations and so on. I don't, I haven't done sort of the dollar for dollar comparison. So I don't know for that. I mean, you would have the choice, certainly. We wouldn't require one or the other. It was more about providing the ability to do them as separate units. But that's, I can certainly see if I can get some construction sort of estimates and sort of get a sense of how, what the difference would be.
Yeah, I could just say from my experience that, yeah, detached is more, is simple and more cost effective.
I mean, I imagine that would be the case. I think balancing, trying to build more affordable housing, using that term affordable housing very loosely, is very important. And just with how much communication I have with the community, noise pollution is the number one thing that will really push people over the edge as far as just harmony in the community and amongst our neighbors and in our environment. Noise is by far the, I think, one of the biggest irritators for, for just the, for everybody, anybody in your home, in your home. And so when we're building these, you know, shared units, or that would be my first thought, is just that some of the advantage of maybe not having that shared wall or being mindful about, you know, where that shared wall is placed, whether it's two laundry rooms or something up against each other, can really just overall help the, it's, it's, it's a benefit for the community in many different ways. Because those stressors bleed out into the rest of the community when we have a lot of people, you know, up close to neighbors. But yes, I, I would support it. I, I think duplexes, triplexes, ADUs, if there's enough room on the lot. I'm a for, I'm, I'm definitely in support of all different types of housing and creative housing that we can come up with.
Okay, Commissioner Massey?
Sure. I, the question that, that I think that Vera posed to us was, did we have any concerns over, you know, the ADU versus what I'll call primary dwelling per lot? And, and I guess I don't have any objection, you know, to whether it's the same number of, of, you know, units or duplexes or triplexes and ADUs. I don't really care what the mix is, whether it's the same, greater, less than, as long as it just meets the, you know, the footprint requirements. I don't, I don't think that that's something we need to get too concerned about. That's, you know, you know, a decision, you know, that is going to be set forth and, you know, sort of the general footprint requirements of the code. And so I don't think that there needs to be any constraints on whether it's fewer ADUs than, than primary dwellings or not.
Commissioner Sherman?
Thanks. I think with respect to kind of the, the duplexes examples that were kind of shown, no issue with any of those. I did want to kind of just on the triplex kind of example, Vera, there was, there's the one in the upper right corner, which was, I don't know if you want to pull it up, but it was kind of like three right next to each other. But they all look detached. And I think one thing, one thing that I just kind of wanted to flag is I know it's been a topic of conversation in other cities in the region is that sometimes that layout can create, for, I'm going to call it, for lack of a better word, like a little mini canyon between the different units where nothing will grow. You can't put in, you can't put any plants there. And that space can also be so narrow, sometimes it's not even really utilizable. It's from a kind of urban design, urban forum. It can just become a little bit of an eyesore. Also kind of with respect to that, that specific layout, I also am aware of one development where they were doing something like that, but a little bit further spaced apart with some ADUs in the back. And that there was concerns over kind of fire life safety for the ability for first responders to actually get through that space and into the units in the back. And so I think we would just, I guess, flagging it as, as, as an issue to kind of think about would be how much space should there be between, between those units? But otherwise, I think with the other kind of three designs, I personally don't have any other issues.
No, it's, thank you for those comments. This is, these are actually the sketches that are used in the model code as a, as a sketch of what a detached triplex would look like. But you raise a good point of making sure that we think about what those minimum spacing standards ought to be. So thank you for raising that. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Greg?
I will repeat my normal sketch, but my normal statement, but I will say this. What, what we do get in here is what is the definition of a cottage cluster? What is the definition of a triplex, detached triplex? It would seem simpler for me that you would actually just lot those detached units out and just go ahead and let them have their, hold their own lot if you're going to detach them. But, you know, I get that maybe we won't allow 1,000 square foot lots or whatever. So, but, right, so we got to be careful about how we write our rules so that there's no confusion over, you know, definition. And I know that, you know, and as far as I know, an ADU is just a building with a 220 outlet in it, which is basically, I mean, about under 800 square feet. So, or above, whatever. If it, yeah, I guess if it isn't a garden shed, right? It's an ADU with a 220 outlet. So maybe we should, instead of using ADU, we could call it a living unit or something like that so that we all kind of understand that it's meant for housing and not meant for storage or something like that. So I trip up a little bit on this definition of what really an ADU is and what it's meant to do because I don't think anybody cares if anybody has a garden shed, if they have enough, you know, lawn in their triplex area to have a, you know, a little building there. So we shouldn't, you know, just outline it. And maybe somebody wants a 220 plug so that they can plug in their electric vehicle or their little thing that they're going to sit on top of their electric vehicle to charge it. So just, just kind of think about maybe, maybe we need to find ADUs a little bit better and think about the conflict we're going to create with cottage clusters versus detached buildings on the same lot.
If I could, just to, to your point about cottage clusters, cottage clusters have a very specific layout, design, the size of the cottages are, the House Bill has a very specific thing about the way they talk about cottage clusters as opposed to a detached quadplex on a lot. They actually, there are specific standards that apply to a cottage cluster. So it will be very clear. And when we get, it'll become more clear as we get into the details. It's a great point and it's been raised before. You know, what's the difference between this and this? And so, yeah, we'll need to, we're trying to be really flexible, but we also need to be clear about what everything is. So it's a good point. Thank you. Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Edge?
Thanks. So just really quick, Greg, ADU is an accessory dwelling unit. So it's actually built into the name that it's a dwelling. So when we refer to ADUs, we are talking about a living space that is accessory to the primary dwelling. Dwelling is the D in ADU. And so it is implicit what, what that means.
The. I, I just, not to interrupt you, but not per our code. Our code is a building under 800 square feet with a 220 outlet. So I.
No, it's a dwelling unit. I mean, it's specific about being a dwelling unit for living in, and we charge SDCs because it's a dwelling unit. So it's not a, it's not a garden shed with electrical, you know? It's, it's actually a space to live and has to meet, you know, certain standards around, you know, being a residential space. Am I, Justin, am I wrong?
It's got to find the, just a thumbs up or thumbs down, Justin, if you can't.
I'm, I'm actually trying to look up the definition, but I, I believe, so I can use the actual words, but on my laptop, I'm not so swift. But I, I believe you're correct. It has to meet standards and it gets inspected as if it's a dwelling unit. So when, when the building department comes out, when they issue their permits, it's for a unit that actually is going to be occupied as a dwelling unit. So you couldn't have an 800 square foot shed with that electrical outlet in it and have it qualify as an ADU for construction.
If I could though, and I'm sorry to belabor the point, but I think to what Commissioner Hemer is saying is that, so when someone builds something that they, because an ADU, accessory dwelling unit has to have, has to have a bathroom, has to have sleeping facilities, has to have a kitchen. And the way we have interpreted calling something a kitchen for the purposes of calling something a dwelling unit is that it has a 220 service, so it has a stove. So I think that's where the 220 piece comes into it. But it also has to have, you know, a bathroom and sleeping facilities. So it kind of, you have to have all of those things to be considered a dwelling unit.
Now, to your point, you could build that and nobody could live in it. It could be your pool, you know, you could put a pool table out there. It could, you know, it could be.
Yeah.
Variety. Are tied to the structure, but it has to be capable of being inhabited.
Right.
And we charge you SDCs for it.
Correct.
Yeah. So anyway, the, I think that how the primary dwellings on a lot are oriented is probably, you know, more, I mean, largely in terms of attached or detached, what combination of attached or detached is probably not the important thing for us to be regulating. I think that we need a really clear definition around what constitutes a, a primary dwelling and an accessory dwelling relationship, including, you know, because we know that you can, in some jurisdictions, you can have more than one accessory dwelling unit for a primary residence. And so we need to think in terms of, again, primary, what are the combinations of primary and accessory dwellings on a lot under a certain development plan? And so if you have a duplex where you have two primary dwellings, each of those could theoretically have accessory dwellings. And that seems fine, you know, as long as we clearly define the relationship between primary dwelling and accessory dwelling. The reason this is important is because you can't require a parking space for an accessory dwelling unit. And so we need to clearly define the relationship. There's a valid policy reason to clearly define this relationship. And so we, we want to make sure we get this right. But also, you know, recognize that the accessory dwelling units allow us this, this hidden density, you know, that is, is a way of, you know, addressing some policy goals. So I don't think that we want to not have accessory dwelling units on middle housing development types, you know? I think that we should allow that, but we just need to really clearly define that relationship and make sure that it's, you know, really satisfying the policy objectives that we're, we're trying to do here. And I don't know if that means that when you have a duplex, theoretically, it's not a condominium, right? It's under single ownership and it's being rented out, either one or both units, the primary units are being rented out. Well, what is the relationship of their accessory dwellings to those primary dwellings in the rental agreements? Is that something that we regulate? Or, I mean, how does this all, what does that all look like? So there's, there's a lot of complex questions there, and I really look forward to getting into these policy discussions. And I know that tonight is not the time to do that, and I'm really, really holding back. But I, I think that that's, that's really where we need to go is a really strong definition around this, of that relationship. And then, but ultimately that this attached, detached thing should, you know, largely not be something that we can turn ourselves with.
Commissioner Sherman?
I just wanted to second your motion to rename them she sheds in our code. But on, on a much more serious note, just kind of on the topic of accessory dwelling units, one thing, I was recently looking at the code and was also reminded of our conversation about flag lots and wanted to just kind of juxtapose some of the ADU requirements specifically around kind of privacy and placement of windows, required screening, and having those requirements in, in the ADU code and not necessarily having, I mean, we have setbacks in, in the flag lots, but just as you're thinking about flag lots, I think we should be thinking about whether or not we want these requirements in either of these codes or both of these codes. So I just wanted to flag that as another thing to kind of keep in consideration.
Okay. Last comment, Commissioner Kosher-Boddy?
Thank you, actually, Commissioner Sherman, for bringing that up. That just reminded me of something else we also mentioned with the fly losses are tree canopy goals as well. Being mindful of that when we're talking about triplexes or duplexes having ADUs, what the tree canopy goals and what those type of things are going to be associated with as well as it pertains to these ADUs. So thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Sherman.
Right. Okay, Vera?
That concludes my key questions. I'll be back to talk with you on June, is it June 8th? I think it is June 8th, just to go over the code adoption process. So kind of just to sort of lay out how we're proposing the process to go after June, once sort of that draft code is submitted to DLCD, then we kind of go into this next round and just kind of to explain, just to lay that out for you more specifically. So we'll be back in a couple of weeks to talk about that. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you. This has been terrific. I'm really looking forward to really getting into the weeds on this with you all. Thank you very much for the thoughtful comments. I really appreciate it.
And Vera, after draft language is presented, how much time and what kind of review and comments? Can you remind me? How much time before there's, it's adopted or it's presented to council?
Oh, right. So well, generally, as part of the, when we go through the calendar kind of with you in June, but generally what we are proposing are at least three work sessions with the planning commission over the summer, coming up with what is sort of the refined code that we would be posting for 30 days, 35 days actually, with a hearing on that set of code or that final code in October, generally is what we're thinking. We'd be having public hearings with the planning commission on that code. And then that recommended code package goes to the city council in December. But throughout that process, we are building in NDA presentations using the Engage Milwaukee website to, because we'll be coming to you in, in sort of chunks of code, not everything three times, and allowing for written testimony and written comments for folks as we go through these chunks. We'll be tracking all of those comments so that there is a lot of opportunity, both for the commission to be in, to be working with us through the work sessions, but also for the community to be engaging in that before it even gets to the public hearing process later in the fall. So that's sort of generally how we're, how we would be proposing that. But there is going to be a lot of work over the summer before we even get to the public hearing in the fall on the code. I hope that answers your question, but.
It does, yeah. Thank you. And I wanted to ask partially because at the end of our package is a pretty lengthy letter from one of our active community members. And I, you know, know that she's very active and probably listening now. And I just want to know, is there any intent to respond? There's some good points being made. Are, are you and the team kind of actively looking at this and working through ways to make better the process, to, you know, throw a wider net, to get more successful survey completed and look at glitches we currently have? One of the greater concerns I think she's bringing up is just relative timeline and the, the feeling of being rushed. Can you just maybe take a couple minutes to respond to that? Because clearly it was well thought through and.
Sure. And I, and I think to, and to Ms. Coburn's points, to, you know, to her letter's points as far as it being rushed, I think what I'm hoping is that, you know, sort of this next phase of code adoption directly responds to that concern because I, what I, and I'm, I imagine, I think that what may have been thought was that, you know, sort of June, this June draft that, or this June code that goes to DLCD as part of the grant and so on, was the end of it. Like that was the code and we would be, we would be going into hearings and, and that's not the case. There's still another six months of code work being done now after this milestone, you know, happens, you know, for June. So part of our rethinking and relooking at the calendar and building in a lot of comment and review time over the next six months was to get to this idea of, or to respond to these concerns about this is a really complicated project. We have a lot to do. We aren't ready yet and we know that. So I'm hoping that, you know, this helps to get to that point that there is still a lot of work to be done and there's still a lot of review opportunity, both from the commission standpoint, but also from the public standpoint as well, well before we ever get to the actual adoption piece of the, of the process. But I agree, there's, like I said, sort of at the beginning, this is a big lab experiment, it feels like in some ways, kind of going through all of this process with our comp plan and then with the House Bill as well and layering all this stuff on. And we've gotten great direction from the public and from CPIC, of course, through all this process. And now we're going to get into the weeds over the next several months. So I'm hoping that that helps to get to that point for her.
One of the things Vera, that she points out is relative to equity. And this process is built on an idea of equity and inclusion in the reforms that we're making and also the, the way of which we're going about doing it. And, and she points out that just the involvement of our DEI officer and also just the relative to the survey responses, being able to get, you know, as much participation from our communities of color. Can you speak about that? How you might be refining the process or trying to better those results?
Generally, I mean, I, I don't think I'm prepared to speak to specifics right tonight about what we'll be doing going forward. We are working with our equity manager on how we, how we do any of this outreach, of course. We had, you know, and we've gone over this, I think, with, with, with the commission before, that, you know, all of our public materials have always been translated into Spanish and have been available in Spanish as well. We had separate small group meetings over Zoom, of course, with, with sort of a BIPOC group as well specifically. And then we had one that was run exclusively in Spanish with Spanish speakers as well. So we wanted to make sure that we gave, that we provided opportunities like that for direct engagement with us as well. We'll be working with the equity manager to see kind of what should we be doing over the next several months now that we have the actual code language and we're working through, we're not just asking for sort of direction. Now we're asking for communications with us on the actual code language itself. I would love to be optimistic and think that we may be able to meet in person maybe a little bit more, or there's, maybe there's more opportunity for a different kind of engagement. It's been really difficult to do this electronically, I admittedly. It's really hard to reach people where they are when this is the only way we can do it. So I'm hoping that over the next few months that we'll be able to expand that, even have a presence at the farmer's market, which we, you know, will be able to have as well through the summer and try to have just more of a, bigger variety of outreach opportunities because doing this electronically is, it's difficult to reach everyone this way, for sure. That's, it's been a tough year for that kind of engagement. Yeah.
Well, I appreciate you indulging me there for a few more minutes.
Of course, no, absolutely.
I think it's important that we, you know, respond and want to continue to encourage community members to be so vocal and investing in their own time to give us good feedback. So I appreciate.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate that specifically. So I think we can move on then to our agenda, Vera, if you're, if I'm right. Thank you so much.
I was going to throw in one more thing.
Yes.
I was going to throw in one more thing is that, since it didn't come up in discussion earlier, the, the revolutionary idea that I suggested at the CPIC meeting was to eliminate lot minimums and allow any of those structures on any lot size. Just basically the same thing that Commissioner Hemer was suggesting. And so I just wanted to go out on the record and make sure everyone had the closure on that was that I was pushing that, that angle that's, you know, pretty similar to what Commissioner Hemer said. And if I should change that direction in future CPIC meetings, as a representative of the planning commission, please let me know. But that's, that's, yeah, I see your head shaking. Yeah, that's right. I know, I'm dragging you on the same team. So anyway, let me know if you have different feedback on that, but it seems like that seems to be kind of a popular idea.
I hear you taking it for your own. I think it might have originated with Commissioner Hemer. You're both innovative in my mind. You're both innovative in my mind. Okay, we're going to move on then. Other business? Commissioners, staff, Commissioner Hemer, other business or updates? Oh, Commissioner Massey?
Let me thank all those who came out to the Friends of the Letting Library plant sale. We're not back up to pre-pandemic levels, but the revenue that was generated exceeded our projections and it all goes to the outreach activities of the library. So thank you. And I got a beautiful 12-foot tri-color beech tree that I'm planting. And-
$50 or $70 worth of plants myself.
Yeah, great. Thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
And, and secondly, Porch Fest came to my street on Friday, the 21st. And I know that this didn't originate in Milwaukee. And we brought it to Milwaukee to get us to socialize during the pandemic. But it's absolutely wonderful. Everyone had their dogs out, the kids are chasing each other. And you know what? The music was really great. And so if the city council is listening, let's continue this post-pandemic.
I couldn't agree more. It was on my block. I didn't see any of you there and there were haircuts.
I saw you there. I, I went to the African marimba one, one night, but didn't, I should have came over. Apologize for, for not doing that. But it was great. I definitely agree with what Commissioner Massey is saying. Hopefully the city continues it.
Commissioner Koshkari?
Oh, yeah, real quick. I just want to, I'm sure most of us don't need a reminder, but Memorial Day is coming up and obviously we won't be meeting till after that. So anyone who has served on this committee, thank you. This commission, thank you. I know Commissioner Massey has served. And this, this weekend is going to be a bummer for those who did not make it home. So I just wanted to say that I appreciate everyone who has sacrificed for this country. And we are still working towards our, our goals every single day. So thank you for everyone.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Should we end on that note? I think so. I think we should.
Laura had something, right?
Well, I was just, I, I don't want to talk about, change the subject, but just neighborhood NDA meeting along with the planning commission, you know, we've been kicking around these dates and I'm having a really hard time finding a date. We talked about the 22nd and then that didn't work. And then we're talking about the 15th, but there might be an additional CPIC meeting. So just so you know, I am trying to find a date. I will let you know when I land on one that I think is going to work for everyone. So I am working behind the scenes to try to get that on the calendar. It's just proving to be a little difficult. So there was that. And then just, there's the forecast, just to go over super quickly and take two seconds, June 8th, we've got two variances coming up for accessory structures. Then Vera is back again. Vera is always back again. June 22nd, we were originally thinking that we'd have COHO, but we're not going to. So it looks like June 22nd is, we're off on June 22nd. There's nothing on the agenda for that. So it can plan for June 22nd. And then again, on July 13th, we have our esteemed Vera coming back to chat with us. So, and that's all I've got.
Nice.
May I ask one quick question? I, I know the library is probably not going to open until 2020. Or do we have plans of meeting at the pulpit at all?
Right now, as far as I know, there aren't any definitive plans, but those conversations are being had. So I will let you know if I hear anything on when we might be coming back together in real time.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm vaccinated and taking in-person appointments for the record.
Agreed. All right. I will take a motion. Come on.
I'll move adjourned.
Have a move.
A second.
Go a second?
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. That we close. All favor. So long, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.